That's a first reading?
Yeah.
Trying to make it first reading.
Got it.
How are you, ma'am?
How are you?
Oh, ho, ho, mayor.
That's right. Very happy.
The December 21st, 2021 meeting of the City Council, the City of Springfield, Illinois, called order, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Clerk, if you please call the roll.
Oh, ho, 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 Mary Christmas. Everybody, everybody, everybody's here.
Santa.
We haven't seen you so long. Last year when I came in, there were only about three of you there. I hope you all got your present.
Not yet. I'm talking about last year.
We did.
Alderman Redpath was here last year.
Did he have his mask on?
And he was eyeing everybody's present.
We believe it.
If you didn't get them, talk to them, all right? How's everybody doing? You been naughty and nice?
Very nice.
Well, really.
Light Santa, Kristen.
This week, you're all nice. So, you know, we'll just, we'll let you know, you know, you guys hear the big boom? I came in about 11:30, flew over and big sound.
That was Santa.
Heard it up.
I heard it was you.
Well, it was me.
Yeah.
It was your Air Force wake.
And, and, listen, I got, I got a text. Federal, state, and local officials are still trying to figure out what it was. They don't believe in Santa Claus.
Oh, man.
But I tried to tell them it was me. Actually, it was Rudolph. Have a lot of ground to cover. And we come in a little bit before Christmas. It's, you know, here we are, four days ahead. Shortest day of the year in the northern hemisphere, longest day in the southern hemisphere, so I got a lot of room to cover. And so we get started a little early. That's why I'm here tonight. So I won't be coming to each of your homes, you gotta remember that. But maybe I will, you just can't tell. But anyway, I'll get, I know you got a big boy looking around this crowd. We got a, it's a good crowd, gonna have a lot going on. So let me get around to letting you have some presents. And you can get on with the meeting. How's that?
Fantastic.
Okay, here we go.
Thanks, Santa.
Actually, Tony Lieber told us the sonic boom was from Ursula and Academy and his purchasing that property.
Thank you.
For the Sonics.
Thanks, Santa.
Thanks, Santa.
So everybody is telling a different story.
Thank you, Santa.
Now, they aren't all the same here, because we wanted to make sure you guys. You guys think they're all the same, don't you?
No.
Try, try.
Not.
Well, thank you, Santa.
Oh, look at that, Santa. Appreciate it.
Why'd he get the big one?
Actually, actually, what I'd, what I'd really like is a, a support letter for the S H A Tiff. Do you think you could help us with that?
Yes, yes. Tell him, mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, we'll see what we have to do.
Thank you.
Mayor, apparently you haven't been that good this year.
Evidently not.
Thank you, Santa. We missed you last year.
Well, you know, I, I was here.
Thank you, Santa. Appreciate it.
We're working on it. We got all kinds of people in the state of Texas.
You're famous, Santa.
Got a couple people back here.
Thank you, Santa.
Merry Christmas, Merry Christmas.
Thank you, Santa. It's the tip, Santa.
Okay, we got some candy here for the rest of you.
You got one for the camera man?
Yes.
He'll leave one behind.
You are perfect.
Well, thanks, Santa.
Santa.
Thanks, Santa.
Thanks, Santa.
Merry Christmas. So clerk, if you'd please call the roll.
Will do. Alderman Redpath?
Here.
Alderman Gregory?
Here.
Alderman Williams?
Here.
Alderman Fulgenzie?
Here.
Alderwoman Purchase?
Here.
Alderwoman DeSensio?
Present.
Alderman McMiniman?
Here.
Alderwoman Conley?
Present.
Alderman Donlin?
Here.
Alderman Hanauer?
Here.
Mayor Langfelder?
Here.
Mr. Mayor, quorum is present.
Thank you. The first item on the zoning docket is number 2021-057 for the property located at 2811 North Dirksen Parkway. Petitioner is Dammit LLC, Series 2. Present zoning classification is I-1 Light Industrial Section 155.040. Requested zoning relief, reclassification to B-1 Highway Business Service District, Section 133.033. Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff. Recommendation is approval. Planning and zoning commission recommendation is accept. The recommendation of the Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff. Chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we accept the planning and zoning commission's recommendation.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to accept the planning and zoning commission recommendation. Second, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open. The zoning passes nine voting yes, none voting no, one voting present.
Hold on. I'm sorry I missed all the vote.
No, you got it. Got it in there.
Next item on the agenda is docket number 2021-059 for the property located at 1909 Plover Road and 4801 Johann Court. Petitioner is Stephanie D. Bertle and Leann Hewlett. Present zoning classification is R-2 Single Family and Duplex Residence District, Section 155.017. Requested zoning relief, a variance of Section 155.061 Basic Yard Requirements for 4801 Johann Court to allow a front yard setback, the south property line approximately 20 feet instead of the required 25 feet, and for 1909 Plover to allow a rear yard, west property line setback of zero feet instead of the 20 feet required. This will allow the property to be converted from a condominium to a zero lot line duplex with a party wall agreement. Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff recommendation is approval. Planning and zoning commission recommendation is accept. The recommendation of the Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff. Chair will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I make a recommendation, or a motion that we take the recommendation.
Second.
Moving second to accept the planning and zoning commission recommendation for approval. And second, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open. And the docket number passes 10 voting yes, none voting no. Next item on the agenda is docket number 2021-061 for the property located at Legacy Point Town Center Planned Unit Development located at south of West Chester Boulevard, west of West Grand Avenue, and north of Interstate 72. Petitioner is Legacy Point Development Company LLC. Present zoning classification is PUD-1. Requested zoning relief, a change of an approved Stage 2 plan pursuant to Section 151.12. Changing the Stage 2 plan, overall plan, final plat of site plan of the Planned Unit Development Ordinance of the City of Springfield for consideration and approval of the modified Legacy Point Town Center Planned Unit Development Stage 2. Submitting, granting PUD-1 Planned Unit Development zoning. Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff recommendation is approval of the modified Stage 2 submitted with the following conditions. Number one, that use of full-cut cutoff fixtures will be required within the commercial, local, commercial, and residential districts. Number two, the height and sign area of the existing monolith sign shall not increase. And number three, the signage shall substantially conform with text and exhibit sign locations and types revised on August 16th, 2021, of the approved Stage 2 plan. Planning and zoning commission recommendation is accept the recommendation of the Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff. Chair will entertain a motion.
Yes, I move to accept the petition as submitted.
Second.
Been moving second to accept the petition as submitted. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open. And the zoning request passes 10 voting yes, none voting no. Next item on the agenda is docket number 2021-062 for the property located at parcel 1 dash, or 1500 North Fifth Street and parcel 2, tax parcel 14-22.0-330-012, located northeast corner of North Sixth Street and Keys Avenue. Petitioner is Anthony Lieber. Present zoning classification is R-3B General Residence District, Section 155.018. Requested zoning relief for parcel 1, reclassification to R-5B General Residence and Office District, Section 155.021, a variance of Section 155.097. Required accessory off-street parking spaces, office buildings to allow the reduction of approximately 10 parking spaces to zero, and a variance of Section 155.114A, regulations for the location of accessory off-street parking facilities to allow spaces located of parcel 2 and more than 300 feet walking distance from the structure served. For parcel 2, a conditional permitted use pursuant to Section 155.018C2, conditional permitted uses in the R-3B General Business Residence District and Section 155.183 accessory off-street parking not on the same zoning lot as you served, to allow parking on parcel 2 for the use of parcel 1. Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff recommendation is approval. Planning and zoning commission recommendation is accept the recommendation of the Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff. Chair will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I make a motion that we accept the planning and zoning recommendations.
Second.
Been moving second to accept the planning and zoning commission recommendation for approval. And second, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open. And the docket number passes 10 voting yes, none voting no. Final item on the agenda is docket number 2021-063 for the property located 3532 Ogden Road. Petitioner is ISO LLC. Present zoning classification is I-1 Light Industrial District, Section 155.040. Requested zoning relief, a conditional permitted use pursuant to Section 155.040C14, conditional permitted uses in the I-1 Light Industrial District Adult Use Cannabis Transporting Organization in Section 155.211.10, Adult Use Cannabis Transporting Organization in Section 155.492, conditional permitted use and a variance of Section 155.496H. Special requirements for cultivation centers and adult use cannabis business establishment except adult use dispensary. Security and video surveillance to weigh the requirements of a high fence for security with gated access control system, conspicuous signage on the premises, loading entry doors not to be visible from the front of the building, dispensing with the requirement of certain security features that are not necessary to enhance security of the premises as determined by the ISP and the Illinois Department. Or Drug, what is it?
Agriculture.
Agriculture. Illinois Department of Agriculture, IDOA. Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff recommendation is approval. Planning and zoning commission recommendation is accept the recommendation of the Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff. Chair will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I make a motion we approve the petition.
Second.
Been moving second to accept the petition and recommendation of the planning and zoning commission. And second, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open. And the docket number passes 10 voting yes, none voting no. This time, the chair recognizes Treasurer Buscher for the presentation of the financial report.
Thank you, Mayor Langfelder.
Sure. Chair will entertain a motion to. Okay, very good.
It was coming up here, I apologize.
Oh, that's right.
The corporate fund for the month of November had a beginning balance of $42,080,618. We took in total receipts of $9,493,144. We had total disbursements in the month of November of $7,405,465, which left the corporate fund with an ending balance in the month of November of $44,168,297. Mayor Langfelder, of that balance, the ARPA fund balance for the end of November was $15,202,700. This concludes my report, Mayor Langfelder, and thank you for your patience.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the financial report? Been moving second. Any discussion?
Just to repeat the report, so we've got $29 million in the, in the corporate fund?
Yes, sir, that is correct.
So we, $44 millions, and then we subtract out the fif, roughly $15 million for the Illinois recovery money, and that leaves 20. Thank you, Treasurer Buscher.
No problem. Thank you, Alderman.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Chair will entertain a motion dispensed with the reading of the minutes of the December 7th, 2021 meeting.
So move.
Of the City Council approving it. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Chair will entertain a motion to incorporate the pre-council first reading of ordinances in the records of the City Council meeting.
So move, Mayor.
Second.
Moving second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. The chair will entertain a motion to incorporate the pre-council reading of the consent agenda in the record of the City Council.
So move.
Second.
Moving second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Chair will entertain a motion to place the consent agenda on the final passage.
So move.
Second.
Been moving second. Discussion, I think there's a request to remove 2021-501 and 2021-502 by the builder with regards to Capitol City.
Yes, that's correct. The city had received, the Public Works had received a request from Martin Engineering indicating that 2021-502 and 2021-501 should be withdrawn. They are presently preparing a different or a new plan, so that'll be separately submitted.
So move.
Been moving second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the consent agenda with the exception of 2021-501 and 2021-502, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries.
Those are withdrawn, correct?
Pardon me?
Those are being withdrawn completely.
Correct.
And then we'll need a motion on final passage for the consent agenda with that change.
Okay.
With a vote. Yes.
Thank you. So final vote on the consent agenda as amended with the withdrawal of those two ordinances? All those in favor, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open. And the consent agenda passes 10 voting yes, none voting no. Agenda number 2021-336, 2021-337, 2021-370, and 2021-371 remain tabled during committee. Next item on the agenda is number 2021-510, an ordinance amending Chapter 96, Section 96.033 of the 1988 City of Springfield Code of Ordinances as amended pertaining to camping. Chair will entertain a motion to place agenda number 2021-510 on final passage.
So move.
Point of order.
Been moving second. Discussion? Alderman McMiniman?
I was gonna try to get you back to your plan where you're gonna try to allow the appointees for the commissions to.
Yep, we could do that.
Well, we already on this.
Let's stay on this one. There's motion on the floor.
Okay, we'll just continue the discussion. Any discussion?
Well, discussion, is this the camping?
Yes.
Yeah, I think it's great to add camping.
We're not adding it.
We're giving the lake area, lake clubs permission to provide camping on their areas of authority. Is that correct?
That's correct. What this does is there's camping previously, but not codified in city code. So we're really codifying the parameters so everybody understands what the camping rules will pertain to based on city code.
Just, just very briefly, I think the issue was that there were differences between the clubs, how they were applying it. And the purpose of this, they, there, several of the clubs have allowed campers to be on the property, some year-round, some partially. The purpose of this is to standardize the regulation about being able to present a site plan, some kind of limitation, and a planning contingency, so there's so uniformity between what the clubs are doing.
Alderman Redpath?
Well, I got cut off there. I started the questioning. And so, thank you for explaining what it does. And I don't want to hold this up, because I think it's a good ordinance that kind of standardizes things and, in effect, maybe even promotes some camping out there. But I do think it's important that we have, if the public wants it, we have camping for those that are not a member of a private club, because that's expensive. And not everyone can join a private club to camp out there. At one time, we had public swimming for those that don't, aren't members of private clubs, where they could swim out in the lake. And we've had to end that for various reasons. When my young family came to Springfield, we loved going out to the lake. We loved getting in the water, and it was a modest charge to get in onto the beach. I don't know if there's an interest in camping out there for the general, for the Springfield residents, but I think we should explore it. And so I just make this request that our, I think this is controlled by C W L P, and I'd like them to think it through and to see if there's an opportunity here to add camping for those that are not members of the private clubs out at the lake.
Okay. Alderman Redpath?
Just a clarification. There's, there's been camping by the clubs, and it was not sanctioned by the city. This ordinance basically cleans up the language and puts parameters into the land use ordinance for the, for the lake. What this will do is it will require each club to submit a composite drawing of where their campers are gonna be. They're gonna have to make sure that their campers are licensed and insured. They're gonna have to register those campers with, with the City of Springfield. And then, any work that they do out there, like sanitary, sanitary, or electric, or anything like that, has to be approved by, by us. I understand your, what you're going with, Alderman, about of a possible public camping out there, but you gotta remember, these are on leased, leased grounds. All these clubs are, have leases with the city. All the land around the lake is leased, except for the parks. And there's about eight or nine parks out there, I believe. It, it, we've never had it out there. And frankly, the, the parks close at 10 o'clock because we had problems with vandalism and, and other things going on out there. So, and it's not that expensive to join the lake clubs. Some of them are $125 a year, and some of them are a lot more. I belong to three clubs anyway, because I'm on the Lake Council, and I, I represent that area. But bottom line is, is that I understand what you, what you're asking, and if the C W L P thinks that it's feasible, they can do that. But you gotta remember, all the services out the lake are fall into the Lake Services, which falls into the Water Department. And the Water Fund is not in great shape right now. We do not have the personnel to, to handle something like this. And it would be an expensive venture, because, and second, and finally, the City of Springfield does not need to be in the camping business. So I ask for a passage.
Well, Mr. Mayor, you know, I understand all that was just said, but I just, you know, let's remember that all Springfield residents, residents pay, that they live in here, they got water and they got electricity. They're paying money into our utility, and those funds are used for the lake. And so my concern is just to find out if there's an interest in camping out there, and then take it one step at a time. Thanks a lot.
Alderman Hanauer?
Yeah, I, I would, I would have to say anybody that, that's interested in camping and any of that, they, they, the lake clubs, they, they can use the, the additional memberships. And a lot of them, at this time of year, have, have incentives for people to join their clubs. You know, so, and, and they're not, they're not overly expensive. Like, like Chuck said, they're, they're 125, maybe 150 a year. And some of them, you have to, you have to work a few hours, and, you know, but that's just part of it. So I, I just don't think that we, you know, we got out of the swimming business because we got into a situation with, with the, with litigation and liability. My concern is, is if the city goes, gets into the camping business, and we have a campground, and, and somebody gets hurt or whatever, again, we're in the same situation that we will be, that we would be with the, with the beach. The, you know, I would love to see the beach house put into something where the public could go and, and use, whether it's a restaurant, or bar, or whatever, whatever. But, you know, that's, I don't think camping is, is a, is a good thing to, to put on the city. There's a K O A right close to the lake. I think there's some camping around, some small lakes around the central Illinois. And I'm sure they can contact D N R, and they, they will be able to, they will be able to find out all the camping areas. So, thank you.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of the ordinance, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open. The ordinance passes nine voting yes, none voting no, one voting present. Next item on the agenda is docket number 2021-512, an ordinance approving appointment of Mrs. Johnson to the Springfield Community Relations Commission. Chair will entertain a motion?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion. We take five, 2021, 512 through 2021, 520 as ominous vote.
Second.
Been moving second to take five, or 2021-512 to 2021-520 as an ominous vote? And second, any discussion?
All the appointments, right?
Yep.
Yes.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Next item would be agenda 2021-513, an ordinance approving the appointment of Isaac O. Edwards to Springfield Community Relations Commission. Agenda item 2021-514, an ordinance approving the appointment of Micah Miller, Micah T. Miller, to the Springfield Community Relations Commission. Agenda item 2021-515, an ordinance approving the appointment of Tina Y. Montgomery to the Springfield Commission, Community Relations Commission. Agenda item number 2021-516, an ordinance approving the appointment of Julie Benson to the Springfield Community Relations Commission. Agenda item 2021-517, an ordinance approving the reappointment of David Herman to the Springfield Civil Service Commission. Agenda number 2021-518, an ordinance approving the reappointment of Corolla Behringer to the Springfield Civil Service Commission. Agenda number 2021-519, an ordinance approving the, oh, we already did that one. Reappointment. Yep. 2020, that one's incorrect. Or was that entered twice? 518, I have 519, Corolla Behringer. That's not right, is it?
19 is Larry Hemingway.
19 is Larry Hemingway.
19 is Larry Hemingway.
Oh, Larry Hemingway. 2021-519, the reappointment of Larry Hemingway to the Civil Service Commission. And agenda number 2021-520, an ordinance approving the reappointment of Beverly Christian to the Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning and Zoning Commission. Chair will entertain a motion to place agendas 520, or I'm sorry, 2021-515 through.
512.
512.
512.
Through 2021-520 for final approval.
So move.
Been moving second. Discussion?
If there's any candidates, if they want to come up and.
Yeah, if you'd come up and introduce yourself, that'd be great. There's only one brave soul. Thank you all. I'm David Herman. I'm an attorney here in Springfield. I've been born and raised here in Springfield. I served in the military with Ward 1 Alderman out at the Capitol Airport. I answer any questions. I have two young children here in Springfield. Well, not young anymore, high school age in college, but they're still young in my eyes. Any questions? I'll be free to answer. Anybody have any questions?
Thank you, David.
Thank you, Alderman.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Corolla Behringer. Thank you for having me reappointed. I appreciate the City Council supporting the Civil Service Commission. And I want you to know how hard your H R department worked to give us the information. We need to do our job.
Thank you, Corolla.
Thank you for your service.
Just a comment. Were you director of our Human Resources Department way back when?
I was director of Personnel, yes.
Back then it was called Personnel?
I was here, yeah. I was here for 15 years. I was here, yeah, I was here for 15 years.
15 years.
Had a, had a hand in writing some of this.
Thank you.
Do you have a son by the name of Doug?
Yes.
Okay, he and I drove wreckers up to Fort McCoy years ago, and he was, he was outstanding at Heavy Machinery, and he went on to, into serving Public Works.
Yes, he did.
Nice going, Corolla.
Good man.
Good man, dude.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very much.
Thank you.
I'm Beverly Christian. I actually wrote a whole speech, but, see, that I don't really need the whole speech, so I want to thank everyone for considering me in being reappointed. Any questions for anyone?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Last but not least, um, thank you, Mayor and Council Members, for the appointment. Um, you know, didn't really get to say a whole lot last time. I, I didn't ask if you guys had any questions, but, uh, I'm a lifelong Springfield resident, grew up on the northwest side of town, I live on the northeast side of town now. Um, School Board Member for Sub District Two and District 186, over halfway through my, my four-year term. And, um, you know, I've just, I've seen a lot of inequities throughout the city. Uh, we see it in the school system, we see it in our neighborhoods, and some of the conversations that you, uh, Council Members have had recently, talking about how we can strengthen relationships, strengthen lines of communication, I think is absolutely necessary to trying to get on top of this. Community Relations Commission Director Huerta does outstanding work. I'm looking forward to some of the other appointments, to working with them, to help to understand some of these issues, and to try to carry the burden of them. I think we need to own these issues if we're gonna get on top of them. So, if you have any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Micah.
Thank you.
Yep. Thanks for your service on the School Board as well.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Alderman McMinima.
Yeah, I just want, thank you for all that are serving. You know, there's a lot of deep backgrounds, deep knowledge, deep expertise from those that are serving on these commissions. And I just want to add a personal comment, that, uh, 32 years ago, uh, being new, and by then, I'd been in Springfield 10 years ago, I wrote a typed letter to Mr. Church, who was the Chief of Staff for, uh, Mayor Ozzy Langfeller, and it, I thought I put out a pretty good resume, and I volunteered for about four or five commissions, but I never got on a commission. And so, I really appreciate, you know, when those that want to serve, they can serve, and for every one that was, uh, that's gonna get approved tonight, we probably got five that would like to get in that seat and serve, especially for the paid positions. So, um, thanks for serving, and, uh, it's an honor and a privilege to serve, and, uh, thanks for showing up here tonight.
Well, Alderman, it's funny you say that, because I applied for commissions under this administration.
We put that one forward, though.
You got the one better.
Wouldn't take me.
Mr. Mayor?
Me neither.
Alderman Gregory, if I may, uh, I, I, I just want to say, on behalf of, uh, Ms. Tina L. Montgomery, she, she was not able to make it. She has been, um, here in the audience, uh, at previous council, uh, meetings and committee of holes, um, and she just not could, Tina Y. Montgomery, excuse me, she's gonna kill me. But, um, uh, she is out of town working, she is very excited to serve on this commission, um, you know, has deep roots in, 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 in our community, she's a resident of Ward Two, as well as her family, um, and, and I look forward to, uh, big things from her on this commission, so I appreciate you.
Great, thank you. Any other discussion?
Thanks, everyone.
All those favor the, uh, ordinances, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open. And the ordinance is passed, 10 voting yes, none voting no. Chair, entertain a motion to suspend with the rules in place on first reading Agenda Number 2021-529, an ordinance authorizing the execution of tentative five-year agreement with the International Union of Operating Engineers, Local 965, for employees with the Office of Public Works from June 1st, 2020, through May.
2025, thank you.
2025, correct. Motion?
Second.
The move in second, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay. Motion carries. Chair, entertain a motion to suspend the rules in place on first reading Agenda Number 2021-530, ordinance authorizing the execution of a tentative five-year agreement with the International Union of Operating Engineers, Local 965, for employees at the Office of Public Utilities from May 1st, 2020, through April 30th, 2025.
I will.
Second.
The move in second, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay. Motion carries. Chair, entertain a motion to suspend with the rules in place on first reading Agenda Number 2021-531, ordinance authorizing the execution of a sub-recipient agreement, Number 21-SR-0005, with the Springfield Project for Acquisition Costs, associated with the acquisition of South Town Economic Development Project, utilizing the city's community development block grant funds in an amount not to exceed $179,235 for the Office of Planning and Economic Development.
So move, Mayor.
The move in second, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay. Motion carries. Is there any unfinished business, come before the Council. We do have, uh, the last day of holiday walks is tomorrow, so hopefully people do come down and enjoy the downtown merchants and festivities, and there's ice skating. I think this is the last day for the ice skating, and we thank, uh, Segment CEO for doing that, um, right outside the old state capitol. Alderwoman Conley, and then Alderman McMinima, and then Alderwoman Purchase.
Sorry, I apologize, Mayor. I got, I, I really get distracted when I look at you and see Santa on you, your masks. Um, I, I did have some unfinished business. I was just wondering, um, we, we still haven't seen a copy of the report on the, from, on the, from the consultants on the firehouses, and I didn't know what the timeline is for that.
Yeah, Director McCarthy, he can give an update?
Next week.
Firehouses or the fire?
The fire department, sorry, yeah.
Alderwoman, we received the first draft of the report a couple of weeks ago, and we're in the process of reviewing that, and actually, we've had some meetings on that. We've got another one tomorrow, and, uh, Mayor, Mr. Zirkel, and the Chief and I had one this morning. So, we'll continue to go through that, and hopefully get a finalized copy next month.
Yeah, we asked them to tie in, uh, previously, I don't think they were looking at the relocations, but they did do the, uh, diagrams associated with the, uh, areas that we were looking at relocating the fire stations.
Right.
So they're trying to look at the calls, and how that would impact, uh, services.
So there were some things in there, and it's pretty standard, same thing happened with Maximus, you go through the draft, and see if there's some things in there that you wanted them to look at, that they didn't, which, as he mentioned, the fire stations are one such example. Once we get on the same page with all of that, they'll go back, they'll update it, and then we'll be able to finalize it.
And then we'll, Council be get a, we'll get a copy?
Yeah, once it's final, everybody can, it'll be public.
Okay, thank you very much.
No problem.
Alderman McMinima, did you have something?
Mr. Mayor and Council, we've had a very, uh, successful completion of the Chatham Road Project, one and a half miles from, uh, the Leland Grove jurisdiction line all the way north to Jefferson. P. H. Broughton and, and Sons did an outstanding job out there. They, they faced, uh, challenges, and they overcame the challenges, and, uh, they, um, they're gonna be featured in some national publicity that includes Chatham Road, and a, a quote from one of our good street engineers, and, uh, Josh Broughton forwarded this to the city today. And, um, so we've got it ready to roll. This kind of features Chatham Road, and the equipment they use, and, uh, by the way, P. H. Broughton and Sons, they're in their 100th year of business activity in the City of Springfield. This, they're, 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 uh, they've been around a long time, and, uh, Mayor, thank you for, uh, preparing a proclamation to put that out there for the public. So, uh, Mr. Kirk, will you roll the, the video?
We're doing an overlay for the City of Springfield on Chatham Road. It's a two-and-a-half-inch binder course going over a concrete road that's kind of deteriorated. We work with P. H. Broughton and Sons every year on multiple contracts. One of the strengths of the P. H. Broughton and Sons is that they buy good equipment, and they keep it in good working order. It's been, uh, on the want list for the city for a long time, and so it's a high-profile project, and now we're, uh, beginning today, we're putting our first lift of surface on it. It's an inch and a half surface course, and it has Kevlar material inside it to help with the reflective cracks. Well, this is our 100th year anniversary this year. My grandfather started in 1921. My great-grandfather, P. H. Broughton, started, uh, with teams of horses, haul of shale, and, uh, digging slips, basements, and whatnot around Lake Springfield. We started out with a working group buying a 5200 Vision Series. Since then, we've added a 2000-3I, and this year, just bought another 2000-3I to complement our baby fleet. I like the way the workers set up with their engines, because you can get in and work on them. The other papers that I'd worked on before, if you wasn't a ring-a-tang, you'd have to pull the engine out of them, and all kinds of problems, so that's had me pretty well sold.
When I started, we were running a 245, which is like nothing compared to what you're driving now. Uh, you know, compared to one sensor, you have the three or four, depending on how many you have on there. Makes it run more level without less bumps, and this, I don't think it's hard to teach anybody on, pretty easy machine to run.
What we like about the vocal papers is that we see them progressing. Every year, they come out with something new, and it's always more technologically advanced than, than the competitors, and anything you can automate makes it easier for us to, to get a good product and a better price.
Do we get a commission for all the machines?
Paid political advertisement?
You know, they, they worked hard out there. It, uh, they, they were on the job for about five months. The, uh, safety was an important feature. There's a lot of traffic rearranging, time and time again, uh, the, the cones were put up, taken down, and, uh, so those concrete pores, they probably did over 100 concrete pores. Some of those intersections required three pores on the same section, because they were at different grade levels for the concrete, and they stuck with it, and they overcame challenges. And Mayor, I also want to thank you, because I don't think the Council knows that back in, uh, April, you and I had lunch out at Isles Park, and we were at that, at that, uh, picnic table, and we had a big map, and at that point-
Your COVID distant, for the record.
We were, yeah, we were across the table from each other, we weren't spreading any viruses, and, uh, and so Public Works had already bid a smaller portion of the project. And you looked at the map, and, and we were discussing it, and wouldn't it be nice to get, you know, 1.5 miles done? And you said, "Yeah, let's do it." And you gave instructions to, uh, Public Works and the, and, uh, Ms. Long, uh, our contracting official, she, she rebid it, and we got, and, you know, it was a competitive bidding, P. H. Broughton got the winning bid, and, uh, so, uh, thank you for, you know, putting initiative out there. This is a project that's been really important for 10 years on the near west side. It's, uh, Chatham Road is the, is the front door to so many neighborhoods, and, uh, there's a, a great deal of pride associated with this, and so, you know, we're catching up to, uh, 11th Street Work, and to Sanford, uh, Stanford Overpass, or the, the straight way there, so, thank you, Mayor, for pushing the projects all the way around. You know, uh, far west side got the roundabout, so we're trying to get every part of Springfield, um, covered, and so-
We're still waiting on Hilltop Road, by the way.
And you got all that for Hilltop Road.
I would like-
They ain't started yet.
I'd like to say, uh, thank you to Danny Bottom, uh, and his crew for, they're the ones that push it forward, and I, we've gotten a lot of, uh, calls and compliments, not only on Chatham Road, uh, P. H. Broughton for getting this done in short timeframe, which we appreciate, but also Walnut. If you haven't done Walnut, you should go down there, because that used to be a four-lane, you know, high-speed area, and they did the road diet with the bike lane, and I think the, everybody really truly likes that, because they have the turn lane in the middle to not obstruct traffic, but thank you for Public Works and their great work.
Thank you, and I'd like to, uh, thank David Whitworth, our construction engineer, and T. J. Heavisizer, our traffic engineer, who helped come up with the phasing plan to keep it safe, working closely with Broughton, and Broughton did an awesome job as well on the project. And our engineering technicians that watched on it every single day, too. They did a great job helping coordinate on the day-to-day activities.
Don't forget P. O. E. Road.
Working with the state on that one.
I'm just glad that a simple lunch in Ward Six could help you work out Chatham Road. Nice to hear.
Well, thank you very much. Uh, is there, oh, sorry, Alderwoman Purchase?
Yes, um, as the Mayor said about tomorrow being the last day for holiday walks, it's also, um, at 8:00, the final drawing for the red ticket contest, so you can join us on Facebook Live for D S I. And friendly reminder, that is four numbers being drawn to receive $1,000, $500, and $250. So make sure you go and spend your money and get your red ticket tomorrow.
Awesome. Is there any new business come before the Council? Alderman Donlin, and then Alderwoman Purchase?
Mayor, I really don't know who to, uh, address this to, so I guess I'll address it to you, and to our Corporation Council. I saw on the, on W M A Y, I believe it was, recently, there was a, a story, a short story about the Airport Authority and the city, and the, the, uh, the story, the gist of the story was that the city owes the airport $800,000. And I know that that issue's been brought up before, because of course, the airport is in Ward Nine, and, and it's something that was talked about a few years ago, and I just assumed that things were progressing along in a positive manner. Could you just give us an update on where that is, and?
Corporation Council can.
Yeah, I think that there is a, a little bit of, uh, confusion relating to the, uh, issue. What they're referring to is a federal, just very briefly, and I don't want to bore anybody with the details, but there was a federal regulation that was adopted by the F A A that was a national regulation that recommended that any local taxes that are, uh, applied at airports across the country should be used for airport purposes. And the state of Illinois, uh, you think of it, it's a little bit similar, I believe, to, if you remember, federal D O T passing, uh, speeding, you know, recommendations about speed laws, and some states adopted, some didn't, et cetera. And so, uh, the F A A, uh, across the country, basically, uh, had taken the position, I believe, that if states didn't adopt local laws to enforce it, because they have no authority regarding local taxes. You know, the F A A cannot, you know, force a real estate tax or a sales tax. Uh, but they do have the power of the purse, so I think they started advising the, uh, various states that they wouldn't be eligible for airport grants if they didn't adopt the law. And I did talk to the, uh, the D O T, uh, Aeronautics Division person that was kind of the, in the area that was involved in this, and he indicated that the state ultimately in 2019, when they changed the law, the state law, um, indicated that, uh, they did it because they were going, they were being told they couldn't get airport grants, for example, with O'Hare and different things like that. So they did change the state law that became effective, I believe, it was in January or February of 2020, uh, that changed the allocation of the local sales tax. So, all of that has been complied with, and there is, uh, we, we really haven't had a communication from the airport, uh, individuals probably since around 2019, when the law was changed. So, um, it's clear that the city would not owe money back until, I think the article indicated like 2002, or something like that, because actually, the regulation, I think, came into effect in around 2014. So, uh, we haven't had any further communications, other than we're complying, because, remember, the Illinois Department of Revenue collects all sales taxes. The city has no involvement with collecting sales tax at the airport or anyplace else, and they, they in turn distribute. So since the law was changed, any kind of, uh, I think our 1.25%, you know, the local distributive portion of the state tax has gone to the airport, is, or to the, uh, there's an airport fund that D O T administers, and then our, our, uh, local home rule tax, I don't think has been charged out there since that time.
Well, it sounds like that, and I'm happy to help coordinate it, it sounds like we need to have a sit-down with the Airport Authority, and just make sure that, and hopefully, hopefully it can be worked out. Uh, so, if you'd like my assistance with that, I'd be happy to, happy to assist with that. I think we need to do it sooner than later, because when you see things like that in the media-
The interesting, the interesting part is the way that the, uh, state law, and, uh, The interesting part is the way that the state law, and was adopted, it says that if the city certifies the use of the local sales tax, you know, our home rule sales tax that's charged there for an airport purpose, then it can be applied, provided it's used for an airport purpose. So the city originally, I think, had requested certification based on the use of police and fire, for example, at the airport. However, that was rejected as a proper use because it's a general, it's a general service provided throughout the community. So at this point, there is no sales tax, it's my understanding, under the Department of Revenue circulars, there is no sales tax being collected of the home rule portion. It's only supposed to be the state 6.25.
Mr. Corporation counsel, you sound like, I mean, you're obviously well-versed in it and know the ins and outs of sales tax law, but I think, to the mayor's point, I think it'd be a good idea if we just sit down and have some communication, and hopefully we can get it resolved.
Yeah, well, that's our intent. Alderman Henner?
Well, and I appreciate that. So do we owe from 2019 to 2000, from 2014 to 2019, or whatever it is then? Is that, is that what you're saying?
That, no, we do not owe it.
We don't owe?
That is correct.
Well, if it went into effect in 2014, and we didn't give them any money, and then go to, you know, I guess, one of the questions I have is, we have an audit every year. Why wouldn't the audit pick that up?
Because it's not due.
It wasn't codified till the state of Illinois passed the state law, and then that's when the Department of Revenue started allocating the motor fuel tax, and they split it out at that point. So they, they distributed the airport's portion at that point in time, which was in 2020?
That is my understanding, that that's, there's various IRS, rather, Department of Revenue circulars, but the FAA adopting a regulation is not binding on the city and the, or the state of Illinois. So they don't, the FAA does not, you know, impose or control distribution of sales tax. The state does that. So the state ultimately decided to implement it in Illinois, you know, in Illinois by state law, after the issue came up that it may affect their eligibility to get federal airport grants. And I think it had to do with O'Hare because I think they were trying to get some pretty substantial federal grants for improvements at O'Hare.
I don't want to belabor the point, Mayor, I'm sorry.
Oh, that's right.
But I just wanted to bring it up. Sounds like that you're more than happy to sit down and chat with the airport officials and see if it can get resolved once and for all.
Yeah, where they came up with the 800,000, they're going back to 2004, I believe, which is, you know, 17 years ago, and, you know, threatened lawsuits and all that. We prefer diplomatic discussions, and I said this to the corporation counsel. He says, well, they don't have a basis, and I guess what it comes down to is what makes sense, you know? We're not here to stick it to anybody, and they shouldn't be trying to stick it to us every turn, and so, you know, but they play theirs out in the media, and we prefer doing it around the table and talking, and they want to invite the media, so be it, but we should have this open discussion.
Well, merit of their defense.
And move in that direction, but the bottom line is who gets stuck, too, are the taxpayers of Springfield, because we represent the taxpayers of Springfield, and that's who Capital Airport represents. And so that's, you know, so, you know, it's just a matter of, you know, taking it from city, giving it to Capital Airport, or whatever's just, but, you know, we're not gonna, we don't want to fight it out in court. We don't believe they have a basis, but, you know, we'll sit down and discuss it and see what's appropriate, and-
Mayor, that's all I'm asking.
-see if we can come with a common sense solution-
Right.
-for the benefit of the citizens of Springfield.
And Mayor, that's all I'm asking. I, you know, I appreciate that, and to, but to their defense, this was, you know, I've been out to the airport a number of times because it is in Ward 9, and it was, it was brought up to me, I don't remember if it was three, four years ago, whatever it was, they had sent a letter, asked me if I knew about it, and I said I did not, and then I talked to Mr. Zirkle about it, and knew you guys were working on it, and it sounds like we need to work on it a little harder together, so thank you.
Sounds good.
I don't think anybody was trying to stick it to anybody. I just asked because I read it in the-
Right.
Online.
Alderman McMinnum?
Well, yeah, it's the Christmas season. We sort of, we're gonna kind of hopefully stay positive, but I've heard the airport authority chairman stick it to our mayor two years ago on morning radio, just say some very unkind, untruthful things, so, and as far as, you know, I think the letters should come from the airport authority, as has been suggested, to our mayor or to our corporation counsel, and working through the media, because I received an inquiry from the media, and I'm thinking, wait a minute, how does the media find out about this, when I've just heard tonight, there's been no formal correspondence between the airport authority and our mayor's office or corporation counsel since 2019, is what I heard.
Like, just what you're suggesting, there was a letter.
So, anyway, let's move on. I think, so I think it's really important to do things the right way, and ambushing in public is not the right way, from my point of view.
Alderwoman Purchase?
Well, on that note, Santa said you guys were still on the good list, and he gave me a good as though gift to give to you all.
Oh, nice.
Perfect timing.
It's obviously your first time.
And as a reminder, the, the city is closed Thursday and Friday this week, the Christmas holidays, and then also, the Springfield Arts Council is having first night this year, of course, on December 31st, and to get a listing of activities, you can go to SpringfieldArtsCO.org. And the fireworks on New Year's Eve will be 11:15 downtown on Fourth and Capitol. Thank you very much.
Very nice. Santa left, the Santa and his helper left a really nice note on inside.
Thank you very much. We appreciate that.
Who's this from?
Santa and Santa's helper. Thank you very much, Alderwoman Purchase. Any other new business? We do have someone signed up to speak. Mr. Vaughn?
Mr. John Vaughn.
If you'd come forward and state your name and address for the council, we'd appreciate it.
Thank you for having me, Mayor and council members. My name is John Vaughn. I live at 840 South Lincoln here in Springfield. Fifty-seven years ago, when I graduated from junior college at Southern Illinois, I moved to Springfield to attend Sagamet State. It was in the second year of infancy, and I enjoyed this town so much because of the nightlife and everything else, being a young man. I said, I got this as a place to live. This has a lot of opportunity. So after, while even in college, I bought my first house, and over the years, after, after I graduated, I bought a lot of rental property, and after a few years, I had up to 300 units. I've been very successful for a long time, until my health started failing me. Well, anyway, when you have rental property, you have one problem. You have evictions because people don't pay rent. You have to evict them, and thank God that I ran into a good lawyer named Mike Dur, showed me how to do these evictions a long time ago, so I was very successful with that, and probably in my first 10, 15 years, I probably evicted like 300 people. But now, the reason I'm here today is, it's not about that, it's about this. About two months ago in November, I was contacted by a couple of people who live in Aaron Conley's district, that there was homeless people living in one of our sheds. Now, there's a, this is a house at 215 North State. There's a four-bedroom house. Behind the house is a fenced-in backyard with a shed. Well, I was notified that there was several homeless people living in there, so I went to those homeless people and asked them, you guys do it, and there's no plumbing here. There's no lights. You can't get mail here. What are you doing here? Well, we didn't have a place to stay tonight. They said, well, you gotta go. Well, they left. A few days later, they're back with more people, so I called the city police, and the police were out there, had been out there several times, and finally, they just told me recently, they can't do nothing about these homeless people, that I had to evict these people. So yesterday in court, Circuit Clerk's office, I filed a forcible entry on the backyard shed at 215 North State, which is ridiculous. These people are trespassing, but the police said they can't do nothing. And then to make matters worse, I contacted Public Health, and Public Health says, if you don't get out to clean up that property there and stuff, we're gonna start fining you. Now, to make that is, the police said, we can't touch their property because that's personal property back there. Now, my concern is, there's a bunch of homeless people living at 215 North State. We don't know who these people are. They could be murderers, they'd be sex offenders, and I'm fearful for the women and the children who live in that district because it's very dark back there. Somebody could get accosted, a child could be abducted, and we're not doing anything about it, and that's why I came here tonight. I knew if I come from the city council and tell them what's going on here, but maybe they could get a hold of the right person and say, hey, these are trespassers. We shouldn't have to evict these people, because what's gonna happen, Mayor? These people are telling their other friends, and pretty soon, we may have 50 homeless people living all over town in people's backyards. It's like, it's almost like just saying this. Tonight, I go to Ms. Conley's house, climb in her backyard, and say, hey, I live here. You can't evict me. You have to evict me. You can't throw me a trespass. Well, that's what the police were telling me. They're not trespassers. We have to evict them. They don't have a lease. They have nothing, and these are properties that cannot have this. We just can't have this, and that's why I'm here tonight, and I thank you for hearing me out about this, and I just wanted to get it off my chest.
Well, I appreciate you coming. It sounds to me it'd be trespassing, but that's-
I got pictures here. I just wanted people to see these pictures.
If that's not the case, then we would have you sign a document, which we have, which business owners can sign, and hope, hopefully, we don't have to go the extent of property owners, because it is trespassing, but I'd defer to corporation counsel if we need to have you sign a document that says nobody can be in that space, or if it's true trespassing, we can escort the individuals off the property.
Well, they do have signs on there saying, do not enter. We have conceal and carry. We have cameras, so we can't go on that prop, we're not supposed to go back there, and it is a dangerous situ, volatile situation, and I'm fearful that somebody is gonna be on that property, or somebody might get attacked or get hurt from somebody, so I don't want my maintenance man or any of my people around over there, I'm afraid, for their safety. So.
Corporation counsel.
Well, the, is, who owns the property at 2-
Actually, C.T. Yang owns that property.
Okay.
And I represent him. I'm his property manager. He's in California.
So the property owner would have the, I mean, have you gone to court regarding the trespassing, got an order from the court?
I just filed a forcible entry right now.
Okay, and has the court ruled on that?
No, we don't go to court till January 7th, but the reason I'm concerned is, Public Health was telling me the other day, if we don't clean this, they're gonna start fining us immediately, and we can't do anything about it till January 7th, till we get a forcible, I mean, get eviction, a vacate order.
Yeah, we will take a look at it because we're getting to the point where, to go to court, like you said, the example, someone's in any of our yards, we're gonna call the police, and we expect them to act and escort people off the property. Goes beyond that, where you have to go to court, it's absurd, so we will figure this out.
I'm just figuring for-
And if you could give your number on where to back there, and we'll be in touch with you and let you know what the solution will be, we'll give you a call tomorrow.
Thank you, Mayor, for, thank you, council members.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else wish to address the council? Oh, Alderwoman DeSento?
I just want to speak to that. I've had three business owners in the past week with very similar situations, so, you know, we've got people that are screaming obscenities outside law offices, dentist offices, architecture offices, and we just, we can't have that, and Officer Jones has still been fantastic in helping out with these situations.
Thank you.
I-
Alderman McMinnum?
Yeah, I completely agree. This is intolerable, any part of town, and I'm familiar, I know people who live on that block, and I've heard, I've received complaints about the changing circumstances there because of what was just described to us, and so, yeah, our SPD, they gotta take this, they gotta pursue this, and we can't allow trespassers to remain on property when the owner of the property and the manager says they're trespassers. I mean, that's just unacceptable.
Yeah, they become squatters.
Thank you.
Anybody else wish to address the council? We wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and a healthy one as well. So is there a motion for adjournment?
So move, Mayor.
Second.
The move in second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Or adjourned. Thank you very much.
Merry Christmas.